Good evening, Mayor Protem Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas. Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Talavera.
Present.
Mayor Pollan Miles. All members are present except for Councilmember Cuevas and Mayor Pollan Miles.
All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk. We're moving on to ceremonials. Councilwoman Suarez, we do the honor flag. And during our infocation will be Pastor Dwight Dudley, now retired.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we've got quite a few new faces here in the change. Good to see you guys. God bless you very much. And, you know, aren't we going through some pretty crazy times right now in the world, the city, and everything else? But you know God is good. And so, as I normally come, I just wanted to leave you with a Bible verse and then we'll go before the Lord in prayer. And this is what the Lord says. He says, "Call to me, and I'll answer you, and I'll show you great and mighty things which you do not know." And so, the Lord is with us. He has direction. He has chosen each and every one of you to be here. And that's awesome, because you're chosen officials. According to Romans 13, you're the guys that he has given charge to, to build a city up and make it better. And I love that, you know? And you guys are awesome in every way. Father, I just lift up this body, Father, this council. Lord, I just pray that you bless them pouring out your Spirit and giving them wisdom beyond their understanding abilities and even training. Father, we just thank you that you're doing a work in our hearts, our minds, for the community. We lift up the new President Trump, the new Vice President Vance, and, Lord, we just pray that you bless them with wisdom and knowledge and that things go well. And, Lord, all of our government officials, our Sheriff's Department, who is working overtime up in the fires, our fire departments, who are putting in just enormous amount of time fighting fires. Lord, we pray for the security and safety of them, their families, their own homes, Father, and for the families that lost some homes. And, Lord, that everything would go well and restoring. And, Father, especially those that lost lives in the fire. Father, we pray for their families and the ministering of the Spirit. And, Lord, I just pray that we'll continue to work together, that we'll love one another, that we'll build better communities, and that your glory will be shined in the hearts and minds of mankind. Lord, bring us together, unite us together for one cause, and that's a better community, a better world. Father, we thank you and we praise you. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Love you guys.
Thank you, Pastor Dudley. And Councilwoman Suarez. Okay, so before we get started, there's a few items we're going to continue. And they are under administration, five, seven, eight, nine. And the two closed sessions we have today, we're going to continue those till February 21st. Is there anything you'd like to say, Council Yeti, I mean, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. No, that's just fine. The closed session is being continued because our office believes that we would like to have the full council, or at least four of the five, here to discuss those items if at all possible, and the rest are for similar reasons. So, none of those are public hearings. There's no need to open a hearing tonight. They're all just continued by that order. Thank you very much.
So if your motors in your cars are still warm, you'll be able to hear it like that. Okay, so moving on to public safety, we have, from the Sheriff's Department, Captain/Louutenant Ricky Osborne. I'm keeping that title.
Good evening, the esteemed members of the City Council and the members of the community. I'm Ricky Osborne, the Lawndale Lieutenant, and I will be presenting the public safety report for January 7th through January 21st. First, I want to give you guys a quick update with the Sheriff's Department. For the last two and a half weeks, we've been put on what they call emergency schedules, 12 and 12s, where the deputies are all working with no days off, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, one shift, and the other shift is 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, to assist with the fires. So, Lawndale's still getting their service that you guys purchased and paid for. Just some of the calls might be a little bit longer to get to because the deputies were prioritizing them on the needs of the station, because the station's running at what they call 50% capacity. With that being said, I'll talk about a couple arrests that we have during this time the deputies are still making while running short. On January 9th, at approximately 10:30 PM, Deputy Garza was patrolling near Marine Avenue and Hawthorne Boulevard when he ran a license plate on a U-Haul truck. The license plate returned stolen. Deputy Garza, along with fellow deputies, conducted a felony traffic stop of the vehicle. Deputy Garza contacted the mayor and the sole occupant of the vehicle. While he was detained, the mayor for the stolen vehicle investigation, he searched the vehicle and located a baggie containing methamphetamine. The mayor was arrested for drug possession charges and driving a vehicle without owner's consent, and the suspect was not a resident of Lawndale. On January 10th, at approximately 1:00 AM, Deputy Hernandez was conducting a patrol check at 15335 Hawthorne Boulevard when he contacted a female adult, and while speaking to her, he saw her drop a clear plastic bag on the ground in front of her. He detained her pending a narcotics investigation and recovered the item she dropped on the ground. The baggie contained methamphetamine. The female was arrested for drug-related charges. The female was not a resident of Lawndale. During this time, traffic, we had eight traffic-related citations for various code violations, failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red light, and speeding. And lastly, community engagement, the next Neighborhood Watch meeting is scheduled for February 19th at 6:00 PM at the Harold Hoffman Community Center located across the street. And I wanted to apologize, we had to not be able to make last week's Neighborhood Watch meeting because we were all up at the fires. With that, that's the end of my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions for?
No questions, but just comment, you know? We want to thank the Sheriff's Department for all that they do and stepping in, and the Fire Department. I don't think we have anyone here today, but, you know, we've all been watching, the community has come up, so thank you for that.
I thank you, I mean, I appreciate that, and I thank you guys for the patience you guys are showing us on some of the stuff takes a little longer for us to get back to you. So I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Lieutenant, Captain Osborne. Okay, we're going along to the exciting part of the agenda. It's oral communications. Anyone that wants to speak on an item not on the agenda, please stand by the flag. You'll have three minutes. Starts with a green light, then you have the yellow light, and then you have the red light. When the red light's on, you're done. So please come to the podium and state your name.
Okay, Holly Osborne. I'm the retired engineer, Redondo, and I'm unscripted tonight. So, anyway, the last time I talked at length, I believe it was in December, and I was talking about the K-line. There's no more green line. And the two, the K-line is going to have extensions at two ends. At the north, there are three options. At the south, there are the two options, the row and Hawthorne. And what I showed last time was that the cost per mile of these three was a lot more than the cost per mile, even the more expensive of these two. So to say that the cost between these two options on the green line extension at the southern end is a deal breaker, not when these three are all a lot more, okay? So tonight, I've got another comparison that I discovered, and I just do this by watching the meetings. It turns out, the K-line, there's a group of people that don't like any of these options. They want a still different one, but let me, I'll get into that in a minute. One of the directors on the Metro Board is very sympathetic. She said, "Back in the day, this one group of people was really shafted," she didn't use that word, "on the 10 freeway went through their neighborhood and they all had to move." And she said, "And we don't want to shaft them again." Again, she didn't use that word. And so, she, Metro had decided that there were originally more than three options, and they have directed, the directors have directed the Metro people to bring back some of those other options. And all of these things sound so similar to what we're going through here. In fact, and the fact that Lawndale, before I even came here, was driven apart by the freeway going through, and with the two options, one of them will sort of retrace it, but another one will just put another split in your city. And I just think it's interesting to know those comparisons. When you get up to talk, I hope, I hope I can find a long-term Lawndale resident that can get from me with this and talk about it, because let me tell you, Jackie Dupont-Walker is so sympathetic, she's the one that really, you know, really was empathetic with those people in, at the northern end being shafted. And, anyway, I just wanted to make you aware of that. And I'm not, I'm not as well organized tonight, but that, to me, was a big discovery. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to read from my notes.
State your name.
Hello, everybody. My name is Dulce Stein, and I am a curator and education specialist at ISMOA, which stands for the Experimentally Structured Museum of Art here in Lawndale. We are located at 14929 Hawthorne Boulevard, and I am here to invite you and to invite the community to join us. Visit us and take part in the many programs that we have available for you. We are open to the public Thursday to Saturday from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, with special workshops on Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. On Saturday, we will be hosting on our art maker space, cardboard printing. Everyone is welcome. We are currently installing Grow, the exhibition about community, opening March 1st from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. To learn more, please visit our website, ismoa.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. The devastating wildfires should be a wake-up call for all of Los Angeles County, including Lawndale. One of the strong possibilities is that the Pacific Palisades fire was caused by hikers igniting fireworks. There were numerous tragedies of fireworks resulting in mass destruction over New Year's Eve, with the worst incident leaving four dead and with the 20 injured in Hawaii. Anyone having read Lawndale's general plan will be aware of the limitations for firefighting in our city. Because of a recent house fire in Lawndale that supposedly displaced 18 people has still not been disclosed. Lawndale is one of the least affluent communities in the South Bay, so if anyone loses their home, it is more than devastating. If you're watching the news, you can observe the devastation that embers capable of flying miles are having in Los Angeles. Lawndale needs to make every effort to ensure that lives and property are a primary concern, and it should not be accommodating the needs of religious organizations that are fundraising by promoting a hazardous product when there are more productive ways to raise funds. It is the city's role to protect the health, safety, and property of its residents. Legal fireworks in our neighborhoods are used to mask the use of illegal mortars. Our Sheriff's Department has made it clear that proper enforcement of illegal fireworks can only be accomplished if safe and sane fireworks are not allowed as well. Last year, the Wesleyan Church was the only organization that was given a pass to operate a fireworks booth and had a net gain of $35,000. The manufacturers pocketed almost $83,000, and 50% of the $35,000 is acquired to go to the community. Of the $17,000 expenses were paid for Sunday School supplies, teen camp, and $5,000 for the Lawndale High School homecoming, to name a few. Although these might be nice, they benefit only a few in comparison as to what is best for the 32,000 residents of Lawndale. If Lawndale won't enforce a one-year moratorium on safe and sane fireworks, perhaps any nonprofits might consider the health and safety of the whole community and not sell fireworks this year. Lawndale has two councilmembers on its fireworks committee. Perhaps a newly-elected councilmember, who unfortunately knows firsthand the devastation of a house fire, will consider the necessity of banning all fireworks for the greater good of the community. Lawndale needs to limit all potential causes of fire. Lawndale's municipal code does provide a simple solution to this matter. As the code states, "Nothing in this chapter shall be construed as requiring a hearing prior to revocation of a fireworks permit or other action under the city's police powers. In the case of a finding by the city manager, that his or her order is necessary for the immediate protection of the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Lawndale, filing of appeals should not stay the order of the city manager." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. Anyone else? Make sure I don't see nobody. Okay, we'll bring it back up to the dais, and we'll have some comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Talavera.
Good evening. I'm glad that everyone came out today. On the issue of the K-line, I spoke to Holly outside, and I'm really excited to learn more about it and get on board. And I'll be reaching out to other community members so they can be, so I can learn more about it and become very active on stopping the green line or the K-line. So I'm looking forward to that. Also, for ISMOA, one Saturday, I passed by there. I didn't stop, but as I passed by and I saw, there was a lot of activity in there. You must have been doing one of the workshops. And I said, "Oh, this is what this is about." So definitely, I will be stopping by. Thank you for, thank you for the invitation. And as for the fireworks, yeah, I agree. That safe and sane fireworks, you know, even those are dangerous. So I'll be looking with that, with the committee. I was voted on to that committee, so I'll be looking into that, too. That's it. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody that came out tonight. And I will be, yes, Frank's on the committee, so he'll continue to look into that with regards to Metro. ISMOA, thank you for all the programs that you put on. And, yeah, that's all I have. I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have a comment for Holly. I was here when the 405 freeway was being built. And if I'm not mistaken, maybe a young lady's father was here. We put up a big stick about that. And now, where they were supposed to extend it is now McKenzie Gardens. There was supposed to be 405 freeway, and now it's a garden. Also, the Westchester area with the airport, Department of Airport's supposed to expand. That's all vacant. So, I don't want to say our government in Sacramento's corrupt, but I think they're smoking their Maui Wowie up there that they legalized. But I will be on board with the K-line, too. I'll be with you there. And with that, I will close this and move on to the agenda. So, next thing on the agenda is consent calendar, item F2 through F4. Do we have any conversation on it? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Suarez?
And I'll second.
And second by Talavera. Madam City Clerk?
Sorry, for the consent calendar, the motion passes with Councilmember Cuevas and Mayor Pollan Miles both absent. My apologies for the slowness. Ironically, there are more buttons to push when people are not here.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So now we'll move on to letter G, administration. As I said, number five has been continued. So we'll move on to number six, quarterly investment report, quarter ending December 31st. I think Iran's doing this.
Yes. Good evening, Council. Thank you. So, tonight, we have the quarter-end investment report ending December 31, 2024, which is Q2 of the fiscal year. So, at the end of the period, there was $56,392,608 in cash and investments, plus another $2.4 million with the fiscal agent, which is held in trust for the tax allocation bond. There's $1,001,000 petty cash and another $784,000 in two retirement plans for PAR's benefits. To kind of go over some of the numbers, there was, you know, the city continues to remain very liquid with the investments. We have 73.88% in on-demand deposits, which is with LEAF and city checking account. And then we have 9.39% in short-term, which is one year or less, 9.2% in midterm, which is one to three years, and 7.5% in long-term, which is three to five years. Just kind of going over some of our investments and what's going on with the economy. In the last quarter, there was three separate interest rate cuts for a total of 1%. So this is the first time since, I believe, since July of '23. So, or quite a long time that rates have not been touched. So they are starting to cut rates now. The next meeting is in about a week, end of this month. They're not projected to have a rate cut yet because inflation does not seem to be going away. We still have high inflation. We're still over 3%. And the Fed has stated that unless they see some solid evidence of coming back down to 2%, they're not going to cut rates yet. In total, there will be six meetings that the Fed will have in 2025. So there's still possibilities of rate cuts, but not for January as a projection right now. But overall, we do expect interest rates to continue to come down, which they have been. They have been coming down slowly, so right now, we're looking at trying to pick up some longer-term investments so we can kind of lock in these interest rates that we do have right now that are favorable before they really do start coming back down to like 1% and 2%, like they were a few years back. Right now, LEAF is at about 4.4%, which is pretty good. Again, that's going to be projected to start coming down once these, you know, rates cycle through and really start coming into effect. So we're going to look at locking in longer term, probably three- to five-year range investments, so that we get a good return on the money that we do have. And that concludes my report. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Do you have any questions for Iran on the quarterly investment report? No questions? This is receiving power. Do we need a consensus or we need a vote?
Consensus is fine.
So we'll all go with the report? Okay. We have the consensus, moving on. To letter G, number 10, award three-year on on-call HVAC preventive maintenance and repair of city facilities services contract. And I believe, let's just do this, Lucho.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Councilmember, and City Clerk. The city has a need for HVAC, a preventive maintenance and repair program. Maybe I'll turn on the microphone today. As I was saying, the city has a need for HVAC, preventive maintenance and repair program for the equipment on city facilities. Over the years, issues have been identified where inconsistent temperature regulation throughout the buildings causing increased energy consumption and frequent breakdowns. Currently, there's three systems that are failing this week at the city, by the way. Therefore, all past maintenance efforts have been performed on a needed basis, which, at the end of the day, is more costly than having a program. In order to extend the equipment life, maintain comfortable, safe environments, an HVAC on-call contract is needed and is considered essential. The preventive maintenance program goals are designed to enhance the system efficiency, extend the lifespan, and minimize all breakdowns in the system. All the facilities covered by this contract will be city hall, the municipal services, building, community center, public works, and two of our parks that have buildings in them. The city Public Works Department issued a request for proposals on November of this last year for the on-call contracts. Four proposals were received. The team from Public Works and Community Services reviewed the proposals. They were scored accordingly to the criteria on the RFP. Based on the scoring, South Coast Mechanical LLC was considered to be the best option for the city, including cost. Now, with that said, city recommends that public, that council contracts with this company, South Coast Mechanical, on a three-year contract for not to exceed costs of $70,000 annually. The cost is supposed to be higher this first year that we need to do repairs, and hopefully goes down for the next two years. The results of this year repairs will tell us the real cost for the next two years. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, please let me know, and I'll try answering them.
Councilwoman Suarez?
Do you have a rough estimate of how much we've paid for prior years for repairs? I just like to kind of see, you know?
The repairs typically cost, not when it's an equipment failure. Equipment failure means replacement, but the constant costs we get are between $1,000 and $3,000 per item. Tomorrow, there's, the same company, funny enough, because they are the ones that service our city, are going to be here to assess three of our facilities, because three, the city yard is not working at one of the buildings, city hall quit working last Thursday, and the community services is also down. I will be able to answer that question so much better after proposals tomorrow, but typically are a few thousand dollars here and there. The preventive maintenance portion of this contract is $28,000. That is to assess the systems and provide the basic maintenance, not doing any repairs. So depending what they find, this first year will cost us more, and that's why $70,000 for the first year. But that extra $40,000 will cover a lot of repairs should we need to, and we have aging systems. I want to include also that in my report. These are old systems having some issues. Not all of them. all of them, but some.
And about how oft, well, I know you're fairly recent, but I don't know if there's any idea of how, fairly how often we've been calling for these quick fixes and what.
Very often, more often than I wish we would. For example, three being reviewed tomorrow, that's a lot out of seven that we have. So it's very often.
I just wanted to ask, from the seven systems that we have operating right now, are any of them so far gone that we're more looking for replacement than repairs?
Hopefully not, but we need to have that assessment. And there was some, I know there's been recent replacements. However, the rest of them are failing too often, and we just need to do the initial assessment. And I tell you, I can give you a good report coming up, depending on that initial assessment.
And after the initial assessment, you can tell us also, like, how old each system is?
I will provide you all that information.
And I have one question for you. It says preventive maintenance and repair of city facilities service contract. Why is William Green Park on it? That's not a city facility. Is it? I think I know the answer, but let me see if, do you know why?
I know there's a building there where we have an office, and I think that has the AC system.
Or was it because the city built that?
I, I.
I'd like to know that, because it's not a city facility. It's a joint-use park building.
I will also come back with that information.
Maybe you can.
Mayor Protem and councilmembers, if you'd like, you had a couple of questions. Staff can do some research and bring it back to you for reconsideration.
All right. Okay.
I'm okay with that.
So is the council going to go to stock repudiation with bringing it back, or you continue this?
Continue it with the new information.
So then I need a motion from council toward a on-call?
Mayor Protem, we can, consensus, the city attorney said you can do consensus.
Okay. I knew he had to come in somewhere. This is good? Okay, there's consensus, okay. We'll go with that one. Let's see where I left off. Okay, well, now we're under letter eight, city manager report.
No reportable items tonight, Mayor Protem and councilmembers in public. Thank you.
This is going to be the shortest city council meeting you ever had. Okay. We're moving on to item eleven, discussion of city clerk conversation. I requested that, that's right. Well, as most of us all know that are here, we brought, obviously, the city up to scale. The council was signed off and received their raises. The only one that didn't benefit or. And to provide an adjustment to the city clerk's compensation. Oh, Counselor Menzel, Suarez?
Well, do we take public comments first, and then we get into discussion?
I don't know if there's a public, do we do public comment? Can we?
If a member of the public would like to, and the council wants to hear from them, you certainly can. If we do move forward with an ordinance, that would require public comment on that for sure. So it's up to the council.
So we have any public comment on this item? I don't have to open that up. Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
Okay. Okay, so I had several questions, because each city functions differently. Some have elected city clerks, some have appointed, and the hours or the duties vary, very largely, between different ones. So for example, I see on here that El Segundo's compensation is listed. However, I know that El Segundo requires, I believe, at least twenty hours in the office aside from the meetings. And so I don't think that this is a good reflection of what, you know, the duties that our city requires and the compensation. So I would like to get more information as to how other cities function. There was an article, and I can't remember because it's been a while, where one city clerk was part-time elected and went and got a job full-time as an assistant city clerk for another agency, and so was getting, you know, benefiting off of the part-time. So I just, just for the sake of letting the public know what the duties, what duties are required of the city clerk, I, on a personal level, I love our city clerk, but I know that there are elections, and in the coming years, we want to make sure that the job description is very accurate, and the compensation reflects that. And so for that reason, I would like to see cities that have comparable job duties and what their compensation is.
Anything for you, Counselor?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about equity and fairness, and as I was sitting in the audience a few months ago, I know there was a lot of discussion or debate about the city manager's pay and our, the council members' pay, and I just think that if our city clerk hasn't had a raise, then she's due a raise. So I'm in favor of upping.
So you're in the favor of bringing back review and discuss the city compensation, or to provide direction to city manager and staff to prepare an amendment to the Longdale municipal code to provide adjustment due to city clerk compensation? That's a lot of reading for me again.
Yes.
Okay. So you have your motion?
So I move.
And I will second it.
Did you state an amount?
Huh? Do we need a vote on this, or is this, well, you do if you're going to do an amendment on it, right?
It would be best, kind of as a starting point, to have an amount that was in there. You can always change it when you're doing first reading of the ordinance, but because it's an ordinance, if it's just a blank, then that first night that we're there couldn't even be first reading. So if there's an amount that the three of you are comfortable with as a starting point, and with everything that Councilmember Suarez said about needing to come back with more detailed information about job descriptions and how those tie to amounts, you can, you can move, but I would be uncomfortable drafting an ordinance that just had a blank in it. So.
And for me, I would like to see, before I commit to an increase, I would like to see that. So if it's going to go forward for an increase, I would be a no as of this point, because I don't have all the information I need to make a justifiable yes.
Well, can we still go forward on this and talk, discuss the amount, full council?
Right, so, so, yes, with a vote tonight, and you have a motion and a second, even if it's a two-one, you're not in an area where you're approving an ordinance, so a two-one is sufficient to give us direction to come back, and when we do come back, we'll come back with the additional information.
Okay.
For item number eleven, the motion passes tonight with council, no, Mayor Protem, oh, having people absent is messing with me, sorry. The motion passes tonight with Mayor Protem Kearney and Councilmember Talavera voting yes, Councilmember Suarez voting no, and Councilmember Cuevas and Mayor Pollan Miles absent.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And we're moving on. Any discussion? Number twelve, report of attendance at meetings. We'll start with Councilmember Talavera.
Well, last week, I was delighted to have lunch with the seniors again. I have a new group of friends, and one that I actually direct towards, my, direct towards, her name is Blanca. And she said, I'm going to talk your ear off. I said, that's fine. So I'm getting a new, a new group of friends there, and I've just been enjoying lunch with the seniors there. And I'll be, next week, I'll be attending the Councilmember Academy in Garden Grove.
All right, councilmembers, Suarez?
I had a steering committee meeting for the South Bay Cities Council of Government. And for those of you that don't know, that's an agency that represents the South Bay, essentially. The steering committee meets to discuss what's going to be on the agenda for the Board of Directors meeting, so that one I attended. I attended the ribbon cutting for Made Burgers. It's a new burger restaurant at, on Hawthorne Boulevard, right next to the Wiener Central. We had a little bit of complications due to the recent fires, so, but we were glad that the owners made it out. I also attended a traffic committee meeting with staff and resident, and there was discussion about 147th, the local travel network, and so I hope there's more to come on that. I also attended a meeting with Councilmember Cuevas for the homelessness solutions committee. And so we will be trying to make those quarterly to give good insight, and I do see a couple of the residents that attended, in attendance here today. And then lastly, I just wanted to end it with, you know, we've, we've had the recent fires and the discussion around it. I just want to give a shout-out. There were a lot of businesses that reached out and contacted me about doing drives. I know, I believe some of the churches did some donations and whatnot, so everybody jumped forward, and I think that speaks volumes as to our city and, and how we really are a strong community. I mean, with that, I'll pass it along.
All right, thank you. Counselor Menzel, Suarez. Okay, and I also attended the ribbon cutting at Made Burgers. If you read Yelp or Facebook or all that, it says it takes a long time to get it out. Well, that's true, because they have a small kitchen, but my wife Ceci and I ate there, and it was delicious. You get what you pay for. It took us about thirty-five minutes to get our lunch, but it was, it's worth the wait. I attended the Library of Tourism Oversight Commission on the fifteenth. I also attended, I'm a member of the LA County West Vector Control District, on the sixteenth, we had a meeting at six-thirty and dinner at seven-thirty, President's Dinner, at Whiskey Reds. And it was a great time there. And then also, Councilmembers, Cuevas and I attended the holiday decorating contest, annual awards ceremony. That was well-attended, there was a lot of new winners there, and Mike, you and your staff did a fantastic job. And with that, I will close that, and I believe we're going to continue our closed sessions. That brings us to, guess what, adjournment time. Our next scheduled meeting, city council will be held at six-thirty on Monday, February third, 2025, here in this council chamber. And with that, at seven-twelve, we're adjourned.